Mr. Selby, again, welcome to you.
Thank you.
Call the meeting order. Roll call.
This action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member answering present. Mr. Murray.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle.
Present.
Mr. Kazook.
Present.
And Mr. Selby.
Present.
All board members present.
Adoption of the agenda?
If there are no corrections or amendments, I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
I'll make the motion to approve adoption of the agenda.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Next item is the public comments. Does anybody would like to make a comment before the start of the meeting? Anything to say? If not, we'll move on. Presentation of AGC Build Kentucky Award.
Turn it over to you all. Ms. Carroll.
Well, on behalf of Branson Construction Company, we're honored to come tonight with some exciting news. We want to announce that the Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center has been selected by the Associated General Contractors of Kentucky for the Build Kentucky Award for their category and building size. This is a big, big honor for a project to be recognized statewide for in its category. And they look at, I guess, quality of construction, state-of-the-art technology, the environment, the impact to the community, all of those factors. I think we all know that the Workforce Center, what it brings to our community, I mean, it certainly provides an educational instructional facility that will benefit our community and the students for years to come and their workforce trades. It's obviously a beautiful building and will serve our community for many, many years. You know, the AGC of Kentucky annually presents this award, and we certainly wanted to submit this for the award because we felt like it would certainly be an award-winning project. And likewise, the panel agreed with us as well. But it's certainly a big honor, and we want to say congratulations to the board, Mr. Ford, for your leadership in bringing this project to develop as it is today. And certainly, it's been a team effort with the board, design team, Mr. Carter Bernhardt, and certainly with the Branson team, Jonathan, Larry, and others. It's congratulations. Again, it's a project that we can all be proud of and certainly one that will serve our community and our home and region for many, many years to come. Congratulations.
Congratulations to you all. Get one of them put on display as well. Thank you. Outstanding. Congratulations.
Good job, John.
I want to give you all a quick update on the athletic facilities I'm here. All the contracts and purchase orders have been sent out. They'll be in love with it in the fact pack and KET right now. So that's been done this week. We plan to have a pre-construction meeting, I'll get with you. We'll set a date where we can have the pre-construction meeting probably over at the old ATC. That meeting room, probably within the next two weeks, we'll be ready to have that pre-construction meeting and hopefully start construction right after that. So we'll cross our fingers for good weather. Hope it stays that way, but should get underway in the next two to three weeks.
And the proposal for the tennis courts?
The proposal for the tennis courts is in the works. We've got that out to the contractors. And as soon as we get pricing back on that, I'll get it to you and we can come to the next board meeting. We should have it before the next board meeting. We'll come and present that pricing and then y'all can decide what you want to do with that. But that's out to the contractors right now. So the only other thing we've got to do is award special inspections. And I've got those proposals in, and I'll just give them to Mr. Ford. When those come in, we'll be ready to award special inspections. That's a third-party inspector that's paid for directly by the board. So those are in now. We just got to get the base selected on board before we start.
Love those other things that, you know, the bleacher stadium, that's all solidified and done. Purchase orders sent, purchase orders sent for the different entities with the Mott's Group.
Musco-Liade.
Shaw and all those different, you know, that's already all done. That takes place. They had to have those in queue so it could be in time in the process. So that part's already all done too.
So we should be underway in the next two, three weeks.
Thank you all. Again, congratulations to you all. That's outstanding.
Next item is election of the board chair.
Russell County Board of Education. Russell County Board of Education Policy 01.41, election of chair and vice chair. Of course, the first one is election of board chair. And just for the audience's information, after, at the first regular meeting in January, following the election of board members, the board shall elect a chair and a vice chair. So we have elections every two years. And so this is the January that we have to elect a chair and a vice chair. They serve two years, beginning immediately following their election. And so at this time, we can take nominations for board chair.
I nominate Mr. Kazook.
I'll second it.
Mr. Hoover, I need to call for any other nominations. Any other nominations?
Do we have a motion to nominate the cease?
Motion for nominations to cease?
I'll make the motion.
Leave it with Mr. Selby.
Second.
Can I do it? I did.
The second nomination ceases.
I don't know if I can.
Okay. Just call for a vote then, Mr. Hoover? Okay. So the motion is for Mr. Kazook to be board chair. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Congratulations. Congratulations. So yeah, you just go right on then.
Okay, and then do the vice.
The vice chair, yeah.
Okay, next item is election of the vice chair.
So the same process, again, we've had board elections. So the board members have to elect, now that we have the chair, we have to do the vice chair. Same term of office for two years.
I'll nominate Brenda Higgins-Bottle.
I'll second it.
Any other nomination? Is there a motion? Close nomination?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Selby did.
Yeah, good.
Okay, the motion is for Ms. Brenda Higgins-Bottle to serve as vice chair. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Okay, well, congratulations, Ms. Brenda. She just threatened Mr. Kazook did not miss a meeting.
Next item is Russell County Education Association Certified Employee Recognition. Danica Hadley, Jameson Elementary School.
No.
You get to go all to the front, Ms. Danica.
Put you front and center.
No, you're fine.
As the RCA president, this is the most rewarding part of that job, is being able to recognize teachers here in Russell County that really make an impact with their students and do a great job every day. Ms. Danica sent me some information about her, herself. She is a teacher at Jake Taylor Elementary. She teaches in kindergarten. So therefore, she gets to teach all subjects.
I've got to interject this. So prior to teaching kindergarten, what did you teach in another county?
Biology.
At the high school level? Oh, you probably got that included. I couldn't resist that part.
That's a big change.
Yeah, she taught high school biology.
So yeah, she has taught a couple of county middle school, integrated science. She has Lindsey Wilson College Bachelor of Science and University of Cumberland's Master of Arts in teaching P5 through 59 and science 8 through 12. So a wide range there. So she is, she is good for all grade levels here with us. Would ask what she liked best about teaching, having the opportunity to empower my students with lifelong learning skills. What amazing, amazing quote there. Hobbies and activities, reading, traveling, spending time with my family and our dogs. How many dogs do you have? Five, okay.
Do they know they're getting ready to move to the backseat?
I don't think they know yet. They'll learn very quickly. Yes, yes. Her favorite quote is, "If you find it in your heart to care for somebody else, you will have succeeded." I wouldn't even say succeed.
Congratulations, Ms. Danica. Appreciate you.
Next item is Mick Sloan, Career Support Specialist with Russell County Schools, Russell County High, apprenticeship building, America Grant Program update.
Mr. Sloan, we'll turn it up. The clicker is right beside my laptop up there, sir.
Jackie said I'd done it in 10 minutes this morning. He said I got 35 minutes during it.
Jackie, why did you tell that? Mr. Selby said you'll go to the closet. Yes, sir. Just hit the button there to the right.
So I'm Mick Sloan. I'm a career support specialist here at Russell County. And we had the Wilderness Education Project Grant was awarded to Russell County. Project Navigate is the name of the actual program that we're running here at the school. And it's for quality pre-apprenticeships leading to RAPs. When you see RAPs, that means it's a registered apprenticeship. Too fast. Okay, the program, the benefits of the program, we have dual credit funding. I have funding that if a kid takes all of their dual credit and they ain't got no scholarships left, I can come in and pay for their dual credit. They get to learn while they earn. And they get to learn important job skills, and I get to that. So there were six schools in the state of Kentucky that got this grant. Pliskey County, Garrett County, Southwestern, Wolf County, Johnson Central, and Russell County. So six in the whole state got this grant. It was a $5 million grant. So here is the funding. Here's the funding that we got. So Russell County was deposited, RAPs, about $26,000 to pay for dual credit. They were given $23,000 for industry-recognized credentials as for taking certification tests, stuff like that. We got $51,000 for curriculum training, new books, any kind of resources, some kind of software, whatever they need to get their industry-recognized credentials. And then my support specialist, $65,000, I don't get paid $65,000. But that pays for my salary and any expenses fringe benefits. So it renews every year. Now, those others that says that are positive, those are wrong. They do not renew. That's all I got for the four-year grant. And then at the bottom, I have $57,024 that I can spend on the job. And we'll get to that in a minute, and I'll show you how we break it down. So the total for four years was $421,583. So I'm this little red bald-headed guy down here at the bottom, career support specialist. First thing I do is I go to the high school, and I go into the career pathways that we're working on, and I recruit these students. So then we get them in a career pathway if they're not already in one. We got support services. We sit down, we teach them soft skills, how to fill out applications, how to dress for success, how to do interviews, all the work-based learning activities that we can do in a city. So then, then we get employers to come in. I got to get employers to buy in. They come in, they sit down, they interview kids. They show them what kind of jobs they have to offer here in the county. And then our goal is to get a pre-apprenticeship model started in the county with the student and employer. So I know you can't see all this, but this is the matrix that was handed to us based on our enrollment. So every year, I got to have 26 kids enrolled in this program. So let's just say I got 26 this year, but 10 of us juniors. So they'll be seniors next year. So next year, I'll have 26 new ones, plus I got the 10 juniors that I had here before. So I have those. But at the end, we got to, we got to service 104 students. And then, you can't see all that, but at the bottom is the number one number we're shooting for. Shoot for 16 kids to complete an apprenticeship. Here's my seven point to employers. After a student works 1,000 hours in an apprenticeship, once they work 1,000 hours, they bring me their time card, signed off 1,000 hours, I write that employer a check for $3,564. That's based on half of, hold on one second, minimum wage at 1,000 hours. That's what they're, so that's a big sell. But now if they get to 999, if something happens, you know, they don't get the reimbursement. So this Project Navigate, its focus is on healthcare, education, electrician, computer technology, clean energy. I was really thinking education would be an easy one. I could get in with the school board. We got the education pathway here at the high school. Come to find out, there is not a registered apprenticeship in the United States for education. Me and Mr. Ford has met with Dr. Neal at Lindsey Wilson, and she's want to be the first one in the country to do it. So hoping we can get together and come up with a plan and get an apprenticeship going. Computer technology, IT, that's something else we got to talk to the board about today, is that we're wanting to do an in-house IT with a student where they help the IT department in the school system, but they will be an employer.
Yeah, it's on the agenda, yeah.
Clean energy, nobody in the state has a curriculum for clean energy. SREB is pumping some money out this summer to train the students or teachers the curriculum for clean energy. But healthcare and electrician, there's plenty of them for that, so we're done good with that. All right, so each school is required to hire a career support specialist. That's me. My job is to recruit the students, pull the students in, look at their schedules, admission scores, do a career inventory, discuss the career pathways, go out into the community, recruit employers, meet the program staff. Once every quarter, I got to go to Lexington, and it's a statewide regional meeting we have. Collaborate with the deployment coordinator, upload student information to the online data program. Schedule individual meetings with students, make sure students complete their pathways. That's the number one goal, is anybody knows anything about education, got to have kids complete these pathways because that's where our partners' money is tied to. And you got to know all the rules and regulations in the Kentucky Workforce Coven, apprenticeship program. When I said I had to bring the kids in for a meeting, this is what we do every quarter. My 26 kids, I bring them in. I got to offer them two services every quarter from that top bracket, one from the middle, and then we do an ILP review every quarter. We make sure they're signed up for dual-credit courses, advanced placement courses, make sure the basket's filled out. And each, the student has to sign it every quarter. So that's the quarterly meeting I do. Then we have a woman come down from Lexington and Mr. Ford, she's a, she's a different character. She speaks eight languages.
Yes, travels the world over.
She travels the world over. She's owns multimillion-dollar companies. And these, there are six kids in this program that she comes down and mentors once a quarter. I had to pick six kids, and she comes down and mentors for a whole day. And they absolutely loved her the first time she showed up. So here's what kind of work-based learning we have. Internship, which we call Job Shadow, that's kind of where I started. I got some at the hospital right now. They're not getting paid, but they can't do nothing. They're just a shadow. They just watch what's going on. Then we move on up to a co-op. They get paid. And then we go into the youth registered apprenticeship. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that when I show you this slide right here. So what have I done since October 11th, which was my first day? Keegan Wade is enrolled in a registered apprenticeship. This is not just a co-op. This is a registered apprenticeship with Zach Superior Service. Zach Walters is in one with IT of HVAC. What that means for them two boys is when they get done their senior year, instead of waiting four years to go take their German HVAC license, they do a year with apprenticeship, they pass the track test, then go get their license. It cuts two years.
That's what it's about.
Here I got student interns, Job Shadow. At Russell County High School, the hospital, I've been a teacher for 17 years. We've never had any kids out of our nursing program go to work at the hospital. So I got Madison Smith. She goes up there. She actually, first day she come back, she said she's singing four colonoscopies and two bowel larynx. That's pretty good for a hospital. Erica Wilkinson, Natalie Fudge went to surgical medical. Kelly Richards went PR. Taylor Owens went to radiology. Abigail Wolfers in Clemmons. Now, here's one thing that shows this works. Taylor Owens was going to go to school to be a radiologist. She spent two weeks in radiology at the hospital. She come to me and she said, "I don't like it. Too boring." All you do is just kind of place them on. I want to be, I want to see some action. So she's actually changed and went back to, or over to surgical medical. And I told you earlier, we're working with Dr. Neal for the teacher apprenticeship. And hopefully tonight, we'll nail something down for her IT apprenticeship here at the school system. So before I, when I took the job, this is one thing that they surprised us with. Not that I wouldn't have took the job, but it changes everything. So June 5th to the 9th, not only do I have to take 10 students, but I have to go to Hasbury College for five days, staying at home. And they're going to do all these workshops to sharpen their skills, interviews, resume, soft skills, and then they're going to have some fun activities one after another. Here's my contact info. If any employers out there are looking, you know, and want to sign up for apprenticeship, by all means, call me.
Mr. Sloan just hit the ground running with this. But just remind everybody, kind of like what I put you on the spot this morning to do, about your background and how you had so much work with pre-apprenticeship programs and how this just tied right to it.
I can't remember what year it was, me, you, Mr. Adams.
Took a couple of kids to Frankfurt as well.
Yeah, and KET actually come to Russell County. Believe it or not, Russell County, 2010, 11.
Oh, it was after that.
Was it?
It was like 15, 16.
Yeah. So we started apprenticeship with Dr. Snyder. Well, basically, every apprenticeship in the state of Kentucky since then's been modeled after that apprenticeship. KET come down, did an interview with us about it, put it on a show. I'm sure everybody's seen that. And, but anyway, the Department of Labor, not Kentucky Department of Labor, United States Department of Labor come down here and interviewed us. We was one of the top 10 in the United States. So apprenticeships, yeah, I've had a little bit to do with it. And if you ever want to come and visit, I'm at the lower level of the new tech center. I call myself the lower-level receptionist because I'm literally a receptionist. On the Carlotta in the basement is where I am. Y'all know Carlotta. I'll let you in. If you want to, I'll let you in. So any questions?
Just one more comment. Ms. Sloan, you're doing great work for some great kids here in Russell County. And we appreciate all that you've done and appreciate all the partnerships. You know, we couldn't do this if people weren't willing to work with us.
And see, and I'm not, I'm not one to toot my own horn, but here's the deal. When I was teaching, if I wanted to get a kid a job, I had to wait until after school. Go knock on doors. Now I got, that's my whole job's around me. I work for.
Boots on the ground.
IT, I work for electrician. And somewhere in that grant, it says 85% of my time's got to be spent on this grant. But once I get it up and running, if, you know, Ag needs somebody to get a job, you know, I told her, I said, "I'll help you." Carpentry, welding, you know. And there's a lot of paperwork. When I send a kid to a job, they got to have a background check. They got to have workforce comp. And we make sure all the, you know, we don't want Russell County School Board to be responsible for making errors. We do all the paperwork.
Those kids at the hospital are awesome.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Hospital layoffs.
I run into a girl the other day that went up there, and I can't say any names, but she went up there for two days. She come back to me last week. She said, "I want to go to college." Of course, you know about the story. And we sat down there with her, and I've never done a fast fill with my own kids. But I sat down and did her fast fill with her. Got her signed up for Somerset Community College, and so she's, she's going to college.
Great work. You mentioned something, me and you talked several times about this, about the nursing home too. Is there?
I'm working. Evidently, that job down there changes quite a bit. I went down there two weeks ago and talked to, what's it, the D.O., something over the nurses. And I talked to her last week, and I called down there. She's no longer employed there. So I got to go back down there. I reckon her turnover, yeah, I got a turnover. So I got to, I got to go back down.
We've got a student working down there. We've got a high school student working down there.
We got kids actually working in the food service and.
Working as an LPN now, or I know Shane Stafford's daughter works down there.
But we have like six, six or seven girls at the high school right now that have their singing age.
Mr. Murray, your granddaughter worked during COVID, didn't she, down there?
Yeah.
And still in school, taking.
I think she's enrolled in a youth school now, in the ERN, she's going now.
Wonderful. Anything you want to add? Like I said, Mr. Sloan, it's on the agenda for the board approval, but particularly about the IT position?
All right, so the student, I got two students in line for this. The one student can't do it this year because his schedule's all, you know, he's got to take those classes. Next year, he'll be a senior, so if we can get this label, you know, nailed down, when we do get his schedule, we'll make sure we block off time that he can go work. This other kid's a senior, but he's got first periods. It's not a required class. So he can work first, third, and fifth. So we figured probably 20 hours a week, starting at minimum wage. And the thing about an apprenticeship, this thing's going to be an apprenticeship. We might turn it into one next year. But the only difference in apprenticeship is like, at a certain time, we got to say, all right, this kid gets so much praise at that certain point. But I, this kid I got, he's a superstar. He's, he'll take a big workload off of the IT department. He can work here in the middle school and never had to get in a car.
Be a big help for them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Appreciate it. Don't walk off with my clicker. I was at the clicker this morning.
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda.
We have the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, school activity fund reports, field trip request, and the treasurer's monthly report. Ms. Carnes.
The treasurer's report for the month of December 2022. The balance on hand at the beginning of the month was $9,609,776.88. Total receipts for the month were $4,277,602.23. The total of the receipts and beginning balance together, $13,887,379.11. Disbursements for the month were $10,911,334.24. And the balance at the close of the month was $10,976,044.87. And our fund balances for the general fund, Fund One, $8,367,460.24. Special projects fund two, $141,426.42. District activity fund 21, $10,504.01. Capital outlay fund 310, $140,952 even. FSPK Building Fund, Fund 320, $1,373,878.98. Construction Fund 360 was negative $97,618.84. Debt service fund 400, zero dollars. Food service fund 51, $1,036,814.36. fiduciary fund, Fund 7,000, $2,627.70. The total cash and bank for all the funds, $10,600, or $976,044.87.
And on the construction, anything that we have to pay out right now for the athletic facilities, then when we sell the bonds, it'll go back into that. And then we also have. And then we also have the, I don't know if it's coming out of this or not, but we'll have some bills coming due for the HVAC project at Russell Springs Elementary School. And then we have to spend that money before we request it back because it's federal funds. And so that will come back through all of those different things as well. There are no changes or amendments. I recommend approval of the consent agenda items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is school year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four schedule or calendar.
Of course, you know, we had the presentation for the first reading at the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. That was last year, wasn't it? For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar and schedule. This meets all the KRS one fifty-eight dot zero seven zero, and we attached for your review. But it meets all the requirements for that. And that bill in particular requires that you have now a first reading, and we've been doing that for a number of years. It also requires that calendar committee meeting that we've had well before the law ever established that. And so you have that, and then you can come after they have had the second hearing, and then you can approve that. So this, this, at this board meeting here, we can formally approve the twenty-three, twenty-four school year schedule. I do want to note, pending on some of the outcomes of what I'm getting ready to say, we may have to make some adjustments. As you know, we have had, had some previous conversations with, regarding the schools being used as polling places. Of course, there's different administration now in the, for the county clerk's office. I met with a couple of reps from the Board of Elections a week before last, had some really good conversations, looking at some alternate places. But if that does not come to fruition or meet the obligations, we may need to come back then and look at our schedule to pull those two days back out because we would be a primary and a general election within the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So I appreciate the Board of Elections giving us some time and looking at that. But I just want to, we can approve it as now. Just know that we may have to bring that back to you all if we can't find some other polling places that meet the requirements. We are the only school around, school district around, McQuarrie County still does, but we are the only school district around that's still, schools are still used for polling places. Yeah. But had a, had a really good meeting with them, and I appreciate what they do as well. So, so I do recommend that we approve it, but we may have to change it. Have some information soon.
Motion, please.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Next item is job description, district admin bookkeeper.
Y'all know for the past several years, we have been bringing different job descriptions to you as we continue our review process. And as openings maybe are going to come, positions are going to come open. This is another one of those situations, but this is the district admin bookkeeper. It would impact several different positions at the central office. So again, we'll continue to revise those, revise job description, and I recommend that be approved as presented. See all the, the different duties and responsibilities? It is. It's one of them. I mean, there's several different people have that title.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept it as presented.
Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Next item, student worker information technology IT department.
So Mr. Sloan's already covered a lot of this, but we can be an active partner, is what I've referred to that as with the Apprenticeship Building American Grant Program. It's under the direction, of course, of Mr. Sloan that serves as our career support specialist. Specifically tonight, we're seeking to permission, permission to create a student worker position for the information technology department within Russell County schools. They will be enrolled in classes at the high school and work part-time with the IT department in Russell County schools. It would provide, of course, wonderful, wonderful experience on the job for the student worker. And just as, maybe not hardly as important as that, but it could certainly help our IT staff. And you all know the amount of devices we have purchased over the past several years, all the Chromebooks, and the screen replacements and all that that goes into that. This, this person could help, if nothing else, could keep them busy doing that. So what we're asking for now is not to exceed twenty hours a week and be paid at the minimum wage. And we can certainly reevaluate that at any time. And then next year, as Mr. Sloan alluded, we would hope to add a second position to that.
I'd like to have somebody else.
Yeah, sure, yeah. And they'll, they'll be here at school and just like I said, just on the job training, just wonderful. And like Mr. Sloan said, between these two campuses, they wouldn't need, have to go anywhere else and could still take a big load off and still get great, great expertise. Obviously, they would not have access to a lot of the network infrastructure and, and things like that. But really, really good experience and a great help to our department as well. So the approval of the student worker for the information technology department, what commonly referred to as the IT department, paid at, paid at minimum wage, not to exceed twenty hours per week.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Good job.
Thanks, George. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
There you go, Mr. Sloan.
Next item is shortened school day and/or week.
Local Board of Education must approve requests for students to have a shortened school day or week. This decision is determined by the needs of the student. The documentation, documentation, including the board's recommendation, is then submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education. Of course, these students, it's for students that are in special education services and need this shortened school day for, for whatever the committee determined is, as applicable. I recommend a shortened school day and/or week for the following students. ID S twenty-three dash zero five and ID S twenty-three dash zero six. And that the necessary documentation is forwarded to the Kentucky Department of Education. And it's retroactive to when the school had that, had that meeting with the, with the parent and looked at the position recommendation and everything for that. So this would make their sixth student for this current school year that's had a shortened school day or, or week.
Need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Next item, regular local school board meetings.
KRS sixty-one dot eight-two-zero calls for each local board of education to hold at least one regular meeting each month at a time and place fixed by the board. And KRS sixty-one dot eight-two-zero requires that the schedule of regular meetings be made available to the public. Of course, anything outside of that, and you all know this as well as I do, or if we have to change a regular meeting, of course, becomes a special meeting. I recommend the adoption of the twenty-three, twenty-four schedule of regular meeting dates for each month, beginning in February twenty twenty-three and concluding in January twenty twenty-four. And then we'll advertise the schedule in advance and announce to the public. All the other meetings, again, of course, will be special call meetings, and then this will be attached and becomes parts of the minute. I want to note again, in the past, we'd got away from traveling around to the schools during COVID and things like that. If you all want to entertain that, we'll certainly entertain that. I can see it both ways. Sometimes it's confusing to people, say, well, where is it at this month? And different things like that. It's great to be out in the school, so I just want to know, we will, we will do whatever's, you know, the board pleases.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Next item is the out-of-state and/or overnight trips.
The following groups have received approval from the superintendent for the following out-of-state and overnight trips. And as we get down to this, I'm going to ask Ms. Hannah England and Ms. Suzie Stevens if they want to add some more details on the EF US National Parks Tour, Grand Canyon, Bryce and Zion, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Where are we going?
So they have, they've, they've headed up this trip before and talked about it.
No, I'm just, hi, my name is Hannah England, and I am the gifted and talented coordinator for the Russell County School District. And Suzie's back there, she's gifted, talented, resource teacher for the district. So this trip has been in the planning for the past year and a half. We obviously saw approval before with Mr. Ford verbally to see if we could get enough interest to go. Thankfully, we have twenty-six travelers that will be going with us this summer. It's June the sixth through the eleventh. We're going to the Grand Canyon and other US national parks include Bryce and Zion. So we're real excited about this opportunity. But with this, it's, not only do kids get an opportunity to earn high school and college credit if they choose, but with the EF tour group that we're going with that offers twenty-four seven, give us a tour director. And the, probably the best part, the twenty-four hour emergency support as well as professional overnight security. So we'll always have security wherever we stay.
They monitor hallways, rooms, and all that during the night.
I was fortunate back in twenty fifteen to go with Ms. Tracy Adams, the former GT coordinator to Puerto Rico. And that was my first experience with EF, and it was, they were just a very professional tour group.
And that was delayed, to reminisce, that was delayed like a year or so because of the Zika virus?
Yes.
Wasn't it? Yeah, yeah.
Yes, it was, yeah. And it also requires any adult travelers that will be going with us, parents, grandparents. It requires them to get a background check before they're able to go with us. So we know that all the kids are safe. Ms. Suzie, now we get to go as the teacher chaperones, but we've also, Ms. Christina Burton from the Russell County Public Library, she has signed up to want to go as well. So we're really excited about this. And I think the thing that I'm most excited about is we were able, as you know, to offer two scholarships for two students from the high school, fully paid to get to go on this trip. And just to, Mr. Ford was there that day that we got to award them for that. They went through a process, but just to kind of get to see their face, both of them first time flying, probably for some, first time out of the state. So we're very excited, a little nervous. My parents are like, Hannah, you're taking kids to the Grand Canyon. What are you doing? So hopefully, praying that we have a safe trip. But if you have any further questions, we can talk to you more about it later. But with your approval, we would love to take these kids outside of Russell County and to get to experience part of the nation that they've never been to.
Are they going, they have to come up with their own expenses, the money?
They, a lot of them, yes. A lot of them have been paying, and that was kind of recommended with the EF tour director or the company. If you can start planning two years in advance, it makes the payments a lot cheaper. So a lot of these students and parents have been paying for the past year and a half, and that will, they will finish up their payments come May. And then if you have decided to pay for it just out of pocket, but yes. Now there have been availability for students to kind of create a GoFundMe page. That's all through this EF tour company that they can do where parents, grandparents, families can submit money into an account for the home. But yeah, it's been in the planning, it's been in the works, and we're just, we tried this before, but we've not had a lot of interest. So we're thankful that we've had enough interest to go. So it's still available. If any of you would like to join us, you can just come on with us. We'd love to have you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Appreciate what you've been saying, students do. Okay. So the Russell County High School banned June twenty, or January twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth for West Kentucky University for the Honors Band. February eighth to the eleventh, the all-state band in Louisville, Kentucky. February seventh, the Top Golf in Nashville, Tennessee with the girls' golf team. February fifteenth, the twenty twenty-three, the Three D Experience Works Music City Center, Nashville, Tennessee for the TSA class. That's the class, that's the engineering class at the high school. March twenty-third through the twenty-fifth, it's Kentucky HOSA State Conference at the HOSA Club. March twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth, it's Kentucky United Nations Assembly in Louisville, Kentucky for the Y Club. And June sixth to the eleventh, the trip that Mrs. England has just talked about, the EF US National Parks Tour, Grand Canyon, Bryce and Zion, Las Vegas, Nevada for the gifted and talented. So I recommend approval of the out-of-state and/or overnight trips.
Motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-state overnight trips. I'll second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is executive session, property KRS sixty-one dash, excuse me, sixty-one point eight oh one, one B litigation, KRS sixty-one dot eight one zero one C.
So KRS sixty-one dot eight one zero, Mr. Kazook noted that Section 1B permits boards of education to go on executive session. I recommend the Russell County Board of Education enter into executive session for discussions regarding property for KRS sixty-one dot eight one zero, Section 1B, and litigation for KRS sixty-one dot eight one zero, Section 1C.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Five forty-seven. Yeah, no action was taken. Are you back good? You good, John?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Russell County School District Wellness Plan.
Ms. Jessica Holt, our food service director, which is doing a fabulous job. And while you're talking and telling about the wellness plan, but also talk about the school, the Student Nutrition Council.
I will.
Okay, good deal.
All right, so wellness plan, each year, school districts are required to review your wellness plan, go over that, make sure everything is meeting the requirements, and then to discuss that at a regular scheduled board meeting. So that is tonight.
Did you have anybody show up for your hearing?
No.
Nobody showed up?
No, no one showed up. That's okay. So each school before October fifteenth every year has to complete an assessment for their school for the Alliance of Healthier Generation. And that just tells us kind of where we're at based on and compared to the state level and the national level. So that's kind of what I'm going to go over. In the area, we have to look at two areas with that, and nutrition and physical education are those two areas. So with nutrition, Russell County is at sixty point six percent of fully meeting best practices. And when you compare that to the state average, the state is at fifty-seven point five. So we are above the state average in fully meeting those best practices in nutrition. We fully meet the best practices in areas of school breakfast and lunch, variety of offering in school meals, promoting healthy food and beverage choices, staff nutrition training, and adequate time for students to eat meals. The need for improvement in the nutrition area is the collaboration between school nutrition services and classroom teachers and the things that they're doing with their students. So some recommendations to increase that would be to encourage at any time if any teachers can integrate any nutrition education lessons into their regular curriculum. And I know that's hard, they have so much that they have to get in, but that would be one way to increase our, our practice with that, our best practices. And then another way to increase that is to allow students opportunities to taste test new food items and to give feedback. So actually, just this past week, I had, I've sent an email to all the principals in the district and asked them to help me come up with a student nutrition council for each school. Five to seven students. We asked that they do participate in the breakfast and lunch programs so that they are eating the foods and they are able to give us feedback. But with those students, I'll, I'm going to meet with those students multiple times throughout the year, just kind of as needed. Maybe when we have new food, things that come out, we have, there's all kinds of samples that we get. And actually, we want to look at the menu with them and talk about things they like that we've had, old and new, things they, they don't like, things that they would like to see on the menu. And so I'm hoping to have our first meeting with those, I'm going to go to each school individually and meet with those student groups. And I hope to have that first meeting toward the end of this week or the beginning of next week.
COVID will be disappointing if anything happens to the orange chicken or the.
Don't worry, the orange chicken's not gone.
There you go.
services and classroom teachers and the things that they're doing with their students. So some recommendations to increase that would be to encourage at any time if any teachers can integrate any nutrition education lessons into their regular curriculum. And I know that's hard, they have so much that they have to get in, but that would be one way to increase our practice with that, our best practices. And then another way to increase that is to allow students opportunities to taste test new food items and to give feedback. So actually, just this past week, I had, I've sent an email to all the principals in the district and asked them to help me come up with a student nutrition council for each school, five to seven students. We asked that they do participate in the breakfast and lunch programs so that they are eating the foods and they are able to give us feedback. But with those students, I'll, I'm going to meet with those students multiple times throughout the year, just kind of as needed, maybe when we have new food, things that come out, we have, there's all kinds of samples that we get. And actually, we want to look at the menu with them and talk about things they like that we've had, old and new, things they, they don't like, things that they would like to see on the menu. And so I'm hoping to have our first meeting with those, I'm going to go to each school individually and meet with those student groups. And I hope to have that first meeting toward the end of this week or the beginning of next week.
Kobe would be disappointed if anything happens to the orange chicken?
Don't worry, the orange chicken's not going.
There you go.
But there are some, some new things that, that I'm looking at adding as just another choice, not necessarily taking away items that were already given, but just so that students have a choice if they don't like what's being offered on the menu that day so that they have something to eat. So that's the first thing I'm going to talk with these students about and actually have the food there for them to taste and kind of give me some feedback on that. Is it something that they would like to have offered, or is it a no? So I've got several items that we're going to do that with, and I think that'll be a really good opportunity. Kids love to tell you what they think, especially regarding their food. So I'm looking forward to, to those student groups, for sure. In the area of physical education, we are slightly above the state and national average in Russell County. We're at seventy percent of items fully meeting best practices. So we fully meet in physical education curriculum, professional development for our PE teachers, and also having licensed, licensed physical education teachers. We actually have those in the woods. So an area, underdevelopment is professional development for classroom teachers regarding physical education. So that's an area of underdevelopment. And again, that's very difficult when you have teachers who are working tirelessly to get their curriculum in to try to add some kind of physical education or nutrition element on top of that. The District Wellness Committee meets four times a year, and that is, there's members from every school that come together and we meet, and we, we look at the wellness plan, what's, what we're doing good, what we need to work on, come up with ways to improve those. And then each school provides feedback, or each representative from each school provides feedback within that meeting, and then we kind of come together and make a plan for each individual school and then as well as the district. So employee wellness, when we, when we look at that as a wellness team, employee wellness as a whole is an area that our assessment indicated that we are actually below state and national average again. So attention is needed to provide staff with programs for physical activity and fitness, healthy eating and weight management, and stress management. So those are some things that the Wellness Committee is looking at. In our next meeting, we're going to do some more brainstorming with that and just try to help bring some attention to that. And that's another area that I think is difficult because...
You know, one year, Dr., it wasn't this past year, maybe the year before last, Dr. Miles came into the bus driver annual training, and you think, well, why do we, you know, they have to have their annual update training? But it was just a lot about prevention, and he talked about, you know, if you're prediabetic, these are things to do. If you're on blood pressure medication, this is things to do. But that's kind of ties into what you're...
It does, yeah. Yeah, just taking care of themselves and teachers taking time to do things for themselves, and everybody's in such a rush and the stress. So we're working to just brainstorm some things that each individual school can do, and then maybe some things as a district that we could do to, to get that up. As a Russell County School Nutrition Team, some things that we are working toward, the school nutrition program at the state level and the national level, for whatever reason, they really push prepackaged food. That is something that is, I think it's easier for them, it's, it's easier to promote, it's easier to, it has a better shelf life, all these things. But we are trying to do more of a focus on Whole Foods and to get away from the prepackaged stuff. So we're kind of, we're not being pushed in any direction to, to give the prepackaged stuff, but we, it's more readily available. But I don't think that's what's best for students. If you look at all the research, Whole Foods is better. So that's really what we're trying to focus on and get away from. We had all that prepackaged stuff during COVID because we didn't have any other choice. And I just don't think it's what's best for kids. So we're really trying to go back to having a focus on more Whole Foods, starting the Student Nutrition Councils that I discussed earlier. We have already done one round of student surveys this year with the middle and the high school with certain groups of those. Just, I wanted to see what their thoughts were on some of the items that we were serving. Did they absolutely not like it at all, or is it something that they loved and we need to keep? So looking at those surveys with middle and high school, there were several items that I just took off the menu completely, and maybe we'll bring it back later. They were tired of it. So I do want to use student input on what we're feeding our kids and offering them. So the surveys, they also provided us with ways that we, as a cafeteria staff, can grow in food preparation and food presentation and food availability, which that's getting better, our availability, and to get what we need to give our kids. And then we have just recently started weekly incentives, and that is for students and then teachers and staff and our cafeteria staff. So for students, on each Monday or the first day of the week they go to school, the kitchen staff are putting some tags on two of the trays just randomly, and if a student gets that tray, they get to take their ticket and show it to the cashier, and they get a price. So it's nothing major, but they have been so excited about.
Yeah.
Do I have the, Mary knows, he sees it, do I have the magic ticket?
I feel my pride looking for it.
It's not a huge price, but they love it. So that's what we're doing with students. For teachers and staff, we spin a wheel, it's on the computer, we've got everybody's